I have seven o'clock. I'm starting it now.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 5th, 2021 Lone Tree City Council meeting. This is our regular meeting. Meeting access this evening will be provided virtually. We will be conducting our meeting as a virtual meeting held electronically in accordance with Council adopted policy number 20-01. How do you enter public comment during these virtual meetings? Comments from the public are welcome and encouraged during our scheduled public hearings or during the public comment section of the agenda. There are three ways that public comment can be provided. One, comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting are forwarded to City Council and included in the official meeting minutes. If you would like to type a public comment during the public comment portion of the agenda, click Ask a Question in the sidebar of the virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public input. Your name and comment will be forwarded to City Council and included into the official meeting minutes. If you would like to speak to Council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and submit your name, address, and phone number. You will receive a call back from Council to hear your comment. Again, all public comments should be directed to City Council, and we ask that you please limit your public comment to three minutes. Again, we typically wait till about 7:03 to begin our virtual meetings to allow time for the public to connect. So if you could just please be patient, and we will begin the meeting in just about a minute and a half or so. Okay, it is 7:03. We will begin our regular meeting, and I will ask our city clerk, Jay Robb, to call the roll.
I don't believe Councilmember Anderson is on the call, but I'll check.
He, I'm sorry, Jay, Mr. Robb, Councilmember Anderson will not be able to join this evening. His wife is having a medical procedure, and he is at the hospital right now. So that's why I asked you to call the roll.
Great. So we'll just call Councilmember Anderson excused.
Yes.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Present.
Mayor Protem Brunick.
Mayor Protem Brunick.
On mute.
Sorry, I was on mute here.
Yep.
Mayor Malley.
Up present. Yeah, I saw you there. So we are, Councilmember Anderson, we are sending him and his family their very best for, and hope all goes well with the medical procedure. So moving on, I would like to ask everyone to stand and join me in the first pledge of allegiance of 2021. So we'll rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, there are no amendments to the agenda, and it is adopted as published. Any conflict of interest, and if there is one, please state it, Council. Seeing none, I'm going to say thank you, move on to our public comment section. And again, I had reviewed, while we were briefly waiting to start the virtual meeting, I had reviewed the ways to provide public comment. To quickly run through those again, any comments that were submitted ahead of time have been forwarded to Council and are included in the meeting minutes from the meeting. If you would like to type a comment to Council right now, please do so, including your name and address, and it will be forwarded on to Council and also included in the meeting minutes. And finally, the third way to provide public comment during our virtual meetings is to, in the Ask a Question box, please type in that you would like to ask a question, include your name and phone number and address, and you will be contacted by staff and will be connected by phone to Council right now. So while I'm pausing to allow anybody that would like to connect virtually to us and ask a question, which is providing public comment, I'm going to quickly run through the city announcements, upcoming events. And again, more information can always be found at citayoflontree.com and lonetreeartcenter.org. COVID community testing at Canvas Credit Union is happening every day from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. through March of 2020. Visit the city website for more information and to preregister. It just makes it go a little quicker for you. City offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. I'm going to check in, Mr. Robb, have we had anybody asked to be connected via telephone to Council for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay, I will close the public comment period. Now move on to our consent agenda. However, I should always note, Council always loves comment, would welcome comment and feedback, and so even though you don't always have to do it just during public comment, please reach out to us by email with anything you may be concerned about or that you're happy about. All right, consent agenda, which includes minutes from our December 15th regular meeting, claims to the period of December 8th through December 28th of 2020, resolution 21-01, a resolution reappointing directors of the Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board. I'll ask Council if there's any questions on consent. If not, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to public comment, excuse me, moving on to community development, and this is a, we have a public hearing this evening on ordinance 20-10, an ordinance approving the Ridgegate Southwest Village Master Improvements Agreement by and among the City of Lone Tree, Ridgegate Investments, and SH Lyric LLC. This is second reading, and I am opening our public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Linda Michal, for our presentation this evening. Happy New Year, Linda.
Happy New Year, everyone. It's good to see your faces, and I'm happy to present sort of the last remnant of 2020 here in 2021, the Southwest Village Master Improvement Agreement. Next slide, please, Jay. So the MIA has been considered in conjunction with the preliminary plan for the Southwest Village, which, as you all know, Council approved at your last meeting on December 15th. The Southwest Village is comprised of approximately 700 acres and is proposed to develop upwards of 1,200 residential dwelling units. So it's a pretty, it is a large-scale residential mixed-use development. And for that reason, we are proposing this master improvement agreement to provide flexibility in this multi-phase development, as well as to provide more certainty where the code, specifically the subdivision regulations, are silent or not clearly applicable. Next slide, please, Jay. So by way of background, the MIA is being proposed to be adopted by ordinance because it does contain provisions that would have the effect of amending and clarifying certain subdivision procedures in the Lone Tree Municipal Code. And those procedures I'll highlight for you on the next slide. But importantly, amendments to the master improvements agreement could be adopted by resolution in the future to provide a little more flexibility among the parties, and that's provided in Section 12 of the agreement. Next slide. So in terms of the substantive provisions of the agreement, we've essentially identified three major components, the first of which is, relates to the subdivision process. What's contemplated in the agreement is an administrative approval process for final Platts, provided that the maximum number of approved residential units doesn't exceed that which is provided in the preliminary plan. And then another provision we've included is flexibility in terms of allowing ranges within phases up to 10% of future final Platts, provided, again, that the total maximum number isn't exceeded by the number identified in the preliminary plan. And if that 10% is exceeded, it's within the city manager's discretion to either approve that or refer it up to City Council to consider anything outside of that 10% threshold, excuse me, and/or require an amendment to the preliminary plan as well, which would then go back through planning and zoning commission as well as City Council. We've also included in the master agreement a process for amending the preliminary plan, which isn't currently identified in the municipal code. So we think that's definitely an improvement and will provide more clarity moving forward. We probably anticipate on some level that there may be changes moving forward, given the scope and extent of the preliminary plan and the development. We are also requiring subdivision improvement agreements for each final plat, and that will further define, you know, the timing, phasing, and scope of required public improvements for each phase. Next slide. So the second major component of the agreement relates to the public improvements, and specifically relating to surety or collateral that's required to be posted to ensure that public improvements are built in association with the residential dwelling units. And what the staff has negotiated with the developer is requiring 115% letter of credit or cash surety for all regional improvements, subject to a restriction on building permits until probationary acceptance of those improvements. And then we've provided a little more flexibility with respect to the local or non-regional public improvements, and those the city will not require collateral in the form of a letter of credit, for example. However, there is a building permit restriction imposed on that phase of development until probationary acceptance is achieved of those local, non-regional public improvements. So that really is protection for the city. And I would also like to highlight that those surety provisions only apply to Shea as the developer and not any other third-party builders. We've also included some build-out thresholds for construction of trails, parks, and the Happy Canyon Crossing, and those are specifically identified in Section 5 of the agreement. And that we've also required that all trails be public. Next slide, please. Finally, the last major component relates to the HOA covenants that must be provided to the city for review in association with each phase and filing of the development. So we've allowed for accessory dwelling units within the HOA covenants so that they cannot prohibit them. The covenants are required to prohibit short-term rentals, which are defined for less than 12 weeks of rental, but that, of course, is subject to change if City Council in the future adopts short-term rental requirements or regulations in its code, in which case the Southwest Village would be subject to those and not more stringent ones that would have been imposed through the covenants. Finally, we've established some maintenance requirements, ongoing obligations with respect to retaining walls and other improvements to ensure their continued maintenance. And importantly, we've excluded all city property from applicability of the HOA covenants, and we think that protects the city from potential fees and fines and enforcement procedures that an HOA could impose against city property. One final note is this navigation noise disclosure inclusion that the city would require in all Platts and site improvement plans. So with that, we have a motion on the next slide, but I am also happy to answer any questions.
So let me open it up to Council for questions, and I do have a question too, Linda. So Councilmember Shaw.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Carpenter.
No questions. I think it addresses a lot of the concerns we brought up previously. So thanks.
And then Mayor Protem Brunick.
No questions for me.
Okay, so Linda, I am trying to understand how the triggers for the park improvements and the road improvements work if the phasing changes. It's kind of the question I brought up with the master. So and as I read through the, I would assume it would cause a preliminary plan amendment. I don't know. I'm reading through this, and I guess I'm going to look to you to, how is this document going to guide us through that process?
If the phasing changes and it implicates any number of those preliminary plan amendment triggers, then we would go through the preliminary plan amendment process. So that would include a material relocation of any local or neighborhood park.
But what, I guess it's more if the phases change, because we tie everything to the phases. So we say when, you know, 40% of the building permits are issued for this phase, an SIP will be submitted for a park. And then when 50% of the building permits are issued, they'll start construction of the park. But are the phases defined specifically in this document? And what we know for sure is that we have the best plan today, but circumstances change, and phasing may change. So how have we allowed for the change of phasing in this document?
Well, the phasing is identified in the preliminary plan, correct? So those phases one through five are identified in the preliminary plan itself. And then it's 40% of residential building permits being issued by the city in the phase in which the park is located.
Correct.
So if a phase changed and changed the park, are you wondering if there would be a change in the park location?
No, I'm wondering if the phase gets smaller or larger, or the phases, that's more what I'm concerned about, is that they decide to only, so if they only... I mean, I don't ever want to predict any doom and gloom, right? But I saw during my tenure in council, three different site improvement plans for a parcel of land, none of which ever came to fruition, right? So I guess my concern is that the phasing, if the phasing changes, how, what process is there for Shea to come back to the city and discuss then impacts on parks and the road triggers? That's what I, so if they never get to 40% of a phase, the phases change to something else. That's my concern. Like, I think the first phase, yeah, I have a lot of confidence that that's going to go through. It's the second, third, fourth phases. So those triggers haven't been identified yet, so we think we're okay. It's the road, the road ones are more of a concern for me. I think I'm being clear.
And I think we could put a note on the master park plan to identify that potential moving forward. I also think that we've got some leverage with the subdivision improvement agreements that would be tied to each of those phases. And then again, if those phases change or trigger any one of those density shifts, then we've got a preliminary plan amendment.
Right. The density shift, I think, is, okay.
Yeah, I think we're covered. It's, it's worth talking to the planning folks and Justin to ensure that the city's covered. I think in terms of the road improvements, they've looked at projected density, right? And traffic counts for that, so.
Yeah, is Justin on here, and could he verify that even if the phasing shifts, that the, that the agreement covers the requirements to build the road connection? That connectivity is extremely important, as is, I think, the development of the parks. The parks are somewhat tied to the residential development. I understand that. But let's say Phase 1 ends up being a little bit smaller than what they anticipate. I just want to know, a process exists to go back in and establish the triggers for the parks and the roads that need to be constructed as part of this development, regardless of the phase changing. I don't need to know how they're going to change. I just want to know that we have a process written down that everybody understands. This is how we handle it if, if Phase, Phase 1 is changed to maybe be a little bit less than. They're still going to be required, once they get to 40%, they would still be required to start the process, 40% of the original. But let's say the phase changes, it would be 40% of the new, and that's...
So Mayor, this is Justin Schmidt. And so I could briefly just talk for one second about the roadway trigger. And we worked with them a lot to get really a three-trigger agreement written into this, and the reason for that was exactly what you mentioned. We wanted to make sure that we did not have a location that in case anything changes, we would get these connections built based on Phase 2 of development going. It also is based on the regional park starting or any construction. Or, you know, if they move their phasing and they start to move to another location, then that would also trigger it. So a lot of the roadway pieces were written with sort of a multiple triggers to allow the flexibility for the city to kind of address a change that would happen. We all think that it's going to go Phase 1 into 2 and allow that trigger to happen, but we did start to write some other triggers in there in case other things do move at a faster pace than we initially anticipated. So I do think we're covered. I don't know if there's a specific one we can look at, but we did try to give a wide range of flexibility for the roadway trigger uses.
Okay, and then do we think, perfect, thank you very much, Justin. So I feel much more comfortable about that, but I guess it's the, I'm just reading this section. I'm looking at page 7 of the, of the agreement that talks about site improvement plan being submitted.
Under paragraph.
In the phase.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so it says, you know, it is just tied to the phase. There's no other trigger, Linda.
Right, so it's 40%. So I mean, I, it's 40% of build-out of that particular phase.
Okay, so.
If that is not a comfortable trigger for Council.
No, my concern is with the changing of the, the phases changing, but 40% of the phase, so if they don't get to 40%, if they make it smaller, they can't make it larger because the density trigger will hit it. If they go smaller, we should still be okay, right? I'm just...
Yes.
Mayor, this is Kelly First. Can I chime in?
Yes, please.
So certainly, as Linda mentioned, the phases are part of the approved preliminary plan. So between the preliminary plan, the master parks plan, and the SIAs, we have a number of different things working in our favor in terms of making sure that these triggers align reasonably with development, right? I mean, we don't, we want to make sure that the residents who are moving in have the right, you know, park amenities at the right time. So any kind of major change to the phasing boundaries would be something that we would be able to look at by virtue of the preliminary plan itself and saying, hey, wait a minute, this is, you know, inconsistent enough with the preliminary plan that we need to go back and revisit this and make sure that those other, you know, whether it's the roads or the parks are really addressed in terms of timing. I would agree that we are covered.
Okay, thank you. That is really just what I needed to confirm, is that we, if the phases change, we still have the appropriate tools in place to make sure the park, appropriate park amenities are built out. Thank you very much. And I wish I'd thought of it to call you earlier today and ask you that, Linda. So thanks for bearing with me. So I didn't, I don't, I didn't hear any additional questions from Council. I will ask if there's any public comment, and we'll pause briefly to allow for any time for the public to connect and ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not seeing any requests for public comment.
Okay. Give it a couple more seconds, and then we'll call it good. All right, well, I will close our public hearing, and I will ask, if there's no additional questions from Council, I'll look for the motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 20-10, approving the Ridgegate Southwest Village Master Improvements Agreement by and among the City of Lone Tree, Ridgegate Investment Incorporated, and SH Lyric LLC on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and motion passes four to zero with Councilmember Anderson an excused absence. So that concludes our formal agenda. We will return to one study session item, but I do want to pause and allow Council comments. We'll start with our Mayor Protem Brunick.
No extensive comments tonight, just a Happy New Year to everyone, and looking forward to moving back to Orange and what that means for our community, and certainly looking forward to, you know, the vaccine as it comes and the opportunity to really get the city back to a normal operating stance. So that's it for me, wishing everyone all the best in 2021.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Yeah, Anderson is not here. Councilmember Carpenter.
Yeah, Happy New Year to everyone. Here's to a great 2021. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Just wrapping up the year, I did attend the Park Meadows Metro District meeting, and I did convey our thanks to them for their renewed partnership on various projects. So I just wanted to update you on that. But other than that, it's been pretty quiet. It was a great holiday, and looking forward to rolling up our sleeves and getting down to business with 2021.
Thanks. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, yes. Happy New Year to all, and we certainly want 2021 to be more productive than 2020. I kind of laugh because 2020 set a fairly low bar for society, but lots of good innovations came from it that hopefully will improve life in 2021 as well. It's always a pleasure to experience the great service provided by city staff, and I was fortunate to experience that. So thanks to the Lone Tree Police and all the support they offered to me, and I personally appreciate that very much. So we have a wonderful city, wonderful city staff, and it is an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thanks, Quinn. I think Council kind of summed it up. What got us through 2020 was... What got us through 2020 was our strong partnerships and collaboration. I think the strong partnerships amongst council, amongst our local government partners, particularly Douglas County with the COVID support. I think our state and federal government partners, even with relief given to our businesses, really trying to hope that they can survive and then begin to thrive. I want to say a special shout out to our staff that was more productive in more ways than one could have expected in 2020. I think every single individual went above and beyond what was probably written down in their job description to respond to the pandemic. I want to thank our residents for their resiliency and their really strong support of local shopping, local dining, and I think support of the mask project, support of our art center. We had record contributions to our art center. And I think the time and talent that was donated to the Lone Tree Feeds, Lone Tree Eats, and the masking project is just simply speaks to the sense of community that exists because of the work of the collective and everybody pushing to position us all to be successful. I felt like I ended 2020 on somewhat of a high, being able to witness the vaccine distribution at Skyridge Medical Center and at Kaiser Permanente in Lone Tree. It did just, I felt like I was witnessing history being made. And it's something I will be sharing, I hope someday, with grandchildren, should I be so blessed? And again, I want to say a huge thank you to each and every one of you for what you've contributed to the success with, at the staff level, with my partners on council and any of the public that is listening to us this evening. I also want to say, we started 2021 on a real high. We're looking at master planning for parks in our community. We saw tremendous presentation about what's going to be happening next at the Lone Tree Art Center. We heard about the resiliency of our businesses. I mean, I feel like this was the right start to our year. And we're looking forward to building upon the strong foundation for recovery that exists in our community. I want to thank each and every one of you for, again, your partnership. So with that, our regular meeting is adjourned. But I am, we, so we're adjourned and I'm gaveling out if I had my gavel, but it's locked away in the city somewhere. And we are going to resume our study session. We had one outstanding issue on that, and that would be the COVID and five star update from Bill Medina, our Administrative Services Director, and Austin Good, Assistant to the General Manager, who will also be presenting. So with that, Bill, Happy New Year, and you're off.
Happy New Year, Mayor and City Council. It's good to be here tonight. So we're going to talk a little bit about the metrics first. So if we can get the first slide. This is something that is very, should be very familiar to you all. This is actually a pretty good news story. We're headed in the right direction, although we're not quite where we need to be yet. So with the new cases, you can see there, highlighted in red, we're at 384. We need to get down to 350 to be at Level Orange. And with any luck, between, somewhere between the 11th and the 18th, if the trends continue to be positive, we will get there. Positivity rate is not quite where we want it to be. Obviously, 5% is the benchmark that public health is looking for. But we are in Level Yellow. And as you can see, we have a very positive trend from what we were seeing in November. The best news story, of course, is with hospitalizations. And we've seen a significant reduction in hospitalizations. This is taking a two-week snapshot and comparing it to the previous two weeks. So we have a significant reduction. There's 36% capacity of ICU beds in the in the county, which is a very high number. And some, you know, some, at that level, the public health officials are very comfortable. So unless there's any questions with the metrics, we'll go on and talk about some developments. Of course, the governor moved all the counties that were in Level Red to Level Orange on the 4th. And CDPHE published a new public health order, which really didn't have a lot of meat to it. They did change the gym capacities to increase their ability to have customers. And it's aligned with what the restaurants are allowed. And apparently, there just seems to, it seems to make a lot of sense to be able to align those two. One of the things that hopefully we won't need to rely upon, but they did include a provision in there for professional performing arts to submit for conducting live streaming when a county is in Level Red. So hopefully, we will not need that. But it is there just in case. And then the last component of, the last major component was the addition of the five-star program under the variance annex. And that's going to be what we're going to talk about next. So, you know, this has been a really good example of partnership. The partnership between the county, the municipalities, Tri-County Health, as well as some chambers, were very involved in getting this thing up and running very quickly. Here in the city, you know, Jeff focused on reaching out to businesses to make sure that they were aware of what was going on. I kind of focused on doing the administrative side of it. Austin was, you know, developing the management infrastructure for the entire program for the county and helping the other municipalities and county officials get through, get through some of the glitches that are inevitable in something this large. And then, of course, we had great support from staff. Jeff, excuse me, Matt and Jim doing inspections for us, as well as Alyssa and Elaine. So real, real good partnership across the board. You know, you can see the certified businesses, and this program is moving so fast, I probably should not even put those numbers because Austin's going to show you what they are right now. But that's where we started the day with 37 businesses in Lone Tree certified. And as of the time I made this slide, we added the art center to this, and now we have 38. And then we have, you know, in the city, we don't have too many that are processing, just a few that are kind of waiting. And we saw, when the governor announced the move from Level Red to Orange, we definitely saw a reduction in interest and in urgency in the program. But I think there's still a lot of value here. One of the things that we were able to clarify today is that certified businesses will be able to operate in Level Yellow once the county reaches Level Orange metrics for seven days. So once again, if we get there somewhere between, you know, Monday and the 18th, we could be operating at Level Yellow capacities for certified businesses within a two-week period. So that's, that's kind of optimistic and very hopeful, I think. And of course, none of this could have happened. The amount, the speed with which we moved and the ability to process all of these requests couldn't have happened without Austin building a great management infrastructure for the program. So I'm going to turn it over to him, and he's going to take you on a little tour of what he's been doing for the last couple of weeks.
Thanks, Bill. And before I kick off, does anyone have any questions at all?
No. I think we're good.
So I hope you settle in. We're going to do a great two-hour tour of the administration of the province, kidding. Okay.
I thought we were on Gilligan's Island for a minute.
Let's see if we can make that.
You don't even know that reference, Austin.
I know a little bit. So can you guys see my screen? Did we get the text to work correctly? Perfect. So what you're looking at here is a dashboard that we created for the whole county. We were able to utilize Smartsheet, which I believe we've talked to council about before, which is a technology project management digitization tool that you guys as the city council have invested in and have really enabled us to scale up a lot of different processes for the city. But in particular, the best practices certification program. We were able to kind of fill a leadership vacuum in developing a process. And we were able to stand it up within days with this platform. So we're really happy that we were able to contribute this, not just to help Lone Tree businesses get certified faster, but to certify businesses throughout the entire county. And what you're seeing here is the landing page where all of our admin people go. It's, I won't bore you too much. This is, this is our process that it takes to bring a business from submitting and saying, hey, I'm interested, to getting certified. Now, hopefully, it doesn't look too bureaucratic. Our goal is to make it as not bureaucratic as possible, while still checking all the boxes. And so really, for the business, in summary, they submit an interest form, a very basic, hey, I want to do this. Someone from a local jurisdiction gets in touch with them, saying, hey, let's help you through the process. Here's a one-page checklist on everything you need to do to get certified. The business submits their one-page checklist through the system, and then they get an inspection from a local inspector. So really, the business has three main points of contact. This, this whole process is really just on the admin side, how we make sure that we're not letting any businesses slip through the cracks, while also making sure that we're fulfilling all the requirements of the program, which in the, at the end of the day, ensure that patrons have a safer experience at these businesses. And it also enables those businesses to operate at the levels that we all want them to be able to. So what's really great about this platform that we were able to provide to the county is it provides real-time data and, again, makes sure that no businesses are falling through the cracks. So you can see, we do have about 10 more certified businesses since Bill made that PowerPoint or updated it earlier today. 237 is our current number. And we also, one of the great things we're able to do is we're able to track how long is it taking us to actually certify a business? So that we're ensuring that any administrative backlogs are taken care of, and we're able to identify what parts of the process are costing us time. Because every hour that we're not certifying a business is an hour that they can't be operating and bringing in needed revenues. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see here, this is our pipeline, which looks much different than it did a week ago. There's a lot more green. So all the green are all of our certified businesses. And what happens is when a business enters the pipeline right here, this is when they submit an interest form. And it looks like we have just one interest form that hasn't been processed administratively, which is great. Again, that means that the business isn't waiting around for the staff to be doing something. Over here on the red side, enrollment approved, waiting for checklist. This is, this is where the businesses are tracked, where staff has been in touch with them and they've provided the one-page checklist to the business, but the business is still working on filling it out. They're still working on those requirements and submitting those back. And then these two over here, they include businesses that are in the process of being scheduled or already have their inspection scheduled. So this is the holding area where we keep them right before they're certified, while we're waiting for them to get inspected. So as you can see, we've done a really great job throughout the entire county of just getting businesses over to that green side. In just a couple or a few weeks that we've been operating the program, we've been able to certify 237 businesses. Another highlight of the dashboard and just the fact that we're able to track everything here, it's really cut down on staff time tremendously. And again, it makes sure that while we're cutting down on staff time, nothing's slipping through the cracks. Bill, I'm going to let you correct me if I'm wrong. This is me just kind of with my feeling, guess from what I've been hearing from folks. I don't think any jurisdiction in the county has had to hire additional staff to operate this program, which cannot be said about other counties in the state. Other counties in the state, not all of them, but they've contracted out the inspections or they've had to go and hire additional help in order to get this processed. In Douglas County, we've been able to cut down the admin work. Again, there's still a significant amount, but we've been able to get it to a point where all the folks that are working on this program, for the most part, they're doing this in addition to all the other jobs that they're doing in their jurisdiction. And so the fact that we're able to make that manageable from an admin side is really powerful. Down below, we also have, you know, just lots of random links, including helping us report out to the state, ensuring that those numbers are captured accurately. And down below, we also are able to pull a lot of key metrics again live. So over here, we have certifications by sector. We have certifications by jurisdiction. And then we also, you know, asked the businesses as they enrolled, you know, why are you enrolling? How'd you hear about this? And not surprisingly, the number one reason for wanting to be certified is that increased capacity. Again, this is a lifeline for those businesses. So that's what we're finding. And then the last thing I'll show you down below, again, I talked about how we're tracking how many days it takes for a business to move through the pipeline. We're not just tracking the total number, we're tracking the days that it takes for every step of the process so that we can really identify those backlogs. And one of those areas is really the turnaround time from when we reach out to a business and say, okay, here's your one-page checklist. Turn this back in once you've fulfilled all the requirements. That's been the biggest, the biggest step for businesses to take. It's taken about two and a half days on average, or two days, for a business to fill out their checklist and get it back to the city or get it back to their local jurisdiction. And so what we're able to figure out there and what we've found from talking to the other folks operating the municipality, and actually, Bill's done a really good job of this, is reaching out to those businesses, asking, hey, do you need any help getting through this? Is there anything that's confusing? And Bill in particular, I got to give him a huge shout out, has been really great with working with the businesses to be able to identify points of confusion so that they can get their checklist submitted faster. And so by seeing that it's taking them some extra time, we've been able to take some steps to try to help them with any confusing points. And another little good note here, we've been in a little battle with Castle Rock over who's certifying businesses the fastest, and we're beating them by point one of a day. So I think that just flips. So that's, that's all on Bill and all the folks that are helping us inspect and on staff. We're officially the fastest in the county, just slightly. Castle Rock's been doing a really good job. Everyone's been doing a great job, but we're number one.
The staff.
So that's, that's just a real quick overview about how we're operating the program. You know, we've really been providing this platform to the county. It has cost us nothing extra other, you know, than our base subscription that we're already paying for. So we're really happy that we've been able to provide this. And again, not just with the infrastructure of this, but Bill, I got to also give another shout out for really providing a lot of leadership and guidance for everyone in the county during our admin calls and during the development of the program and working through the confusion of different state orders and different movements on the dial. Bill's been a really great leader in not just helping us through that, but helping the whole county. So I'm really glad that we've been able to really be a model for the state. Actually, if you look at some of the other counties and their forms that they're using and some of the language they're using and how they're managing the program, a lot of them copied us. So I think it's a really great testament to the great collaboration that happened here. We have about 100 staff members from all the jurisdictions that are using this dashboard on a regular basis. Some of them are just peeking in and checking out the numbers. Some of them are in here every hour, logging, keeping track of documentation. But we're really happy with how it's turned out.
So before you move on, I have to give you guys a note that I meant to forward to Seth, and I still haven't, but it's, "Thank you from the Lone Tree Brewing Company." Jackie, just a quick, this was sent on Christmas Eve. "Just a quick note to express our appreciation for a job well done by you and your staff in regard to the handling of the current COVID-19 pandemic and more specifically, the five-star certification. It was without a doubt the smoothest implementation I have ever been a part of. It was wonderful to work with Elaine and Bill. You should be very proud of your staff. Many, many thanks. We love being in Lone Tree. Happy holidays to you and yours, the Lone Tree Brew." Brewing Company Crew, and it's actually sent from John, the owner. So that was an early Christmas present. And Austin, while this didn't specifically call you out, I got a note from our county commissioners that did specifically call you out and the great work that you did in addition to Bill. So you two are not just the heroes of Lone Tree, you're the heroes. And, and from Jennifer Ludwig, excuse me, also at Tri-County Health. So you, you two did, and I know there was a support team associated with it. So everyone did a tremendous job, but I do appreciate the leadership from both Bill and the great work and leadership from Austin, guiding not just the city, but the county process, and it sounds like some of the state as well. So I don't, I don't have any questions, but just a lot of gratitude. And I wanted to make sure I shared that note from Lone Tree Brewing Company with you. So let me move on. I know all of council wants to just gush with kudos. So, you might need a raincoat for all the things coming this way. So Jay, you go first.
All right, great job, Austin and Bill. So as Seth always says, we always want to be a national role model. And now we just laid it out on the state level and the regional level, and certainly on the county level. So it just shows, as Austin mentioned, there's kind of a vacuum of leadership and filling that void and being proactive and creating these great systems. And on behalf of the 237 and growing businesses, you know, thank you. That's awesome. It's really cool stuff. So great job.
Gwen.
Yes, I can't be more proud than I am to hear other people talk about the leadership and the, and truly the capability that it took to build this from others, Jennifer in particular, from Tri-County. And I am ever so grateful to you guys for being able and taking the initiative to get this done because it is so important to our citizens and our businesses. And God love you.
And Mayor Pro Tem Brunick.
Well, you know, I dig the technology often, so I wanted to ask.
You can't hire him, Kathy. He's ours, so don't even try it.
I have other questions about, hey, what about this? I was just in Smartsheet right before the meeting. So I'm really excited that you guys are taking advantage of that technology. I think it's amazing. And, and more importantly even, of course, thank you for the work you're doing. But we pride ourselves throughout the county, right, as being great partners, right? We talk all the time that we get everything done because of the partnerships that we have. And when we, as one of the smaller cities in that contingency, can really offer up something of great value as part of that partnership. offer up something of great value as part of that partnership, you just know that that is going to pay huge dividends in our partnerships and our extension with those partners in the future. So, you know, the investment that y'all made to really be a leader here is, is an unbelievable feat on many levels to move that quickly and that with that kind of data. Just super impressed and deep gratitude for what I know this will bring, not only in the benefits right now, but in the benefits in the future.
Well said. Well said. And I'm already strategizing how to take advantage of their good work to our benefit.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, Seth, please.
Well, I just want to say thank you to, to council. It was really awesome in our reading people's evals and self evals, how much they value our culture of innovation at the city. And I think this is a product of that. But I think the council has really helped us develop that. And you give us kind of the room to experiment. You know, we invested in Smartsheet probably three years ago, really to do better with project tracking and we've been able to expand it into so many other things. But I don't think, and I think several of you mentioned how sort of the breadth and the scope of this shouldn't be underestimated, but to stand up a multi-jurisdictional process like that, just, just getting everybody a login, just, you know, setting up all that, you know, really minor sounding stuff. I mean, this would be the kind of thing that would take a year of planning, really, in a normal circumstance to do. But because we have that culture, because we have the right people and because you've helped us, you know, attract and retain such great and talented people, I think that that's, that's what led us to this success. And I do think that this one in particular is going to be one that we do talk about for, you know, awards and, and other things. That's obviously not why we did it, but I do think this will be something that does get recognized, you know, after the, the program isn't, isn't needed anymore. The other thing I just wanted to mention, it's kind of not directly related, but tomorrow's a big milestone because our police department is getting, starts their vaccinations. And I was asked earlier today and I didn't have the answer, but almost all of our PD staff, including the civilian records staff, will be getting vaccinated. I talked to Dennis Page today and he was excited that he'll be getting his vaccination tomorrow and will be, you know, on our way there. So that's a, that's a big milestone and happy to see, you know, those people that have been out there, working every day out in the community, finally have a little more protection than what we've been able to give them so far. So just wanted to share that real quick.
Thanks, Seth. And thanks for your great leadership in all of this as well. I knew, I think you have set a great standard and attracted a great, and retained a great staff. So we're, we're, couldn't be, we couldn't have ended the year better. And we need to put Bill and Austin in charge of that vaccine distribution for the federal government next. So.
I actually thought about that last night, that Austin and Bill were, should be in charge. Never thought about that. So.
Believe me. I was like, oh, we can get it done. We can get it done. So that would be awesome. You know, you know, another shout out that we have to give before we all go is to, to Justin and the Public Works Department for the awarding of the revitalizing Main Street grants. So again, I think it's partnerships, it's good work with collaborative work with, with our, all of our regional partners. And when's going to get us, Dr. Cog got about 36 million wins. So get us some of that money too. And.
Sounds good.
It's very, it speaks very highly of the city that we were awarded that. So I think, I want to make sure that we give those guys a shout out as well. So.
If I could add also that I, a lot of this is making sure that you read the packets and understand what's being asked and position the projects properly. So I have nothing but respect for, I think Dan had a, a good role in this and the, the whole staff. It, it takes a village.
Yeah, it absolutely does. Well, it takes a city. We're, it takes a city. So all right. Any, and I think hopefully everybody heard that Mike's wife came through the surgery really well and they're keeping her overnight. But everything's looking good for them. So that's awesome. And, and any, anything else for the good of the cause? Okay. Well, here's to starting off, starting off a very abbreviated council meeting after a very long end of the year, another, another good start to 2021, right? We're sitting here for five hours. So cheers to that. Okay, everybody. I can't wait to see you in person. This is, continues to be challenged, but stay healthy. Stay healthy, everybody. Thanks for all the great work and we will virtually be together soon. Bye.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Good night.